We'll call our meeting to order. First, we have the invocation by Councilmember Scott Irwin, the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Don Williams. Will you please stand?
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us today. Lord, we pray for all of those down in South Louisiana who are repairing their homes and, Lord, just recovering from Hurricane Ida. Lord, we pray for all of the communities, Lord, who are rebuilding their infrastructure. Lord, we pray for our nation as we battle COVID, that we can continue to make progress against the COVID pandemic, Lord. And, Lord, we pray for those in Afghanistan as they face an uncertain future. Lord, we know you're in control, and we pray for wisdom for our nation, for our state, and for us in this council many today. And, Lord, we pray for Christie, who is Vince's friend, who is at home sick today but is watching on the Internet today. And we thank you for all of our blessings, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Repeat the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Montgomery?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Irwin?
Here.
Mr. Darby?
Here.
Mr. Williams?
Here.
Mr. Free?
Here.
Mr. Maggio?
Here.
All present?
Any announcements, girls?
I don't have my announcement sheet. That's what I was just looking for. I did not stick it back on here. I apologize.
Did a motion to approve the minutes. So move.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Did it pop up, council?
Yeah.
Motion carries. Counsel, we have an add-on today, and we have requested deletion for today. The add-on is going to be, and you'll need to vote on these separately. New business item number 14, adopt an ordinance, amending ordinance number 70 of 2021, which declared that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City, which affected property, public health, and safety due to settlement along Airline Drive, Murphy Street, allocating an additional $700,000 to come from the sewer capital and contingency funds, and authorizes the city to enter into a contract with Wickard Construction for completion of the work and providing with other matters in connection therewith. And then there'll be a first and final reading. And this item is being requested to be added due to further deterioration of the area.
So move.
Yes, second.
Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Council, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. The next item, counsel, will be at the request of Mayor Chandler to delete item number 12 under new business. He brought me a letter that says that I am withdrawing my name from nomination of Director of Public Works for Bossier City. Thank you for the nomination and consideration for this position. And that was Mr. Wade Rich. So we'll need to delete that item from the agenda.
Make the motion that we delete the item.
Second. Are there any questions from the audience? Any questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. We need a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Make the motion we approve the agenda as amended.
Second. Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Did it show up on yours?
Hmm.
Does it show approved?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, unfinished business.
Adopt an ordinance to contract with Civil Design Group, LLC, to provide a traffic study for a turn lane located at the intersection of US Highway 71 in Golden Meadows Drive. Final reading.
Second.
Any questions from the audience? Questions from the council? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to contract with Nixon Engineering Solutions to provide construction documents for drainage improvements along Parkway Drive and Elm Grove Ditch. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to contract with Rayleigh and Associates, Inc., to provide design services for expanding the parking lot at the Bossier City Municipal Complex. Final reading.
Second.
Any counsel, any questions, counsel? Counsel, any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to contract with Rayleigh and Associates, Inc., to provide design services for Phase 1 and 2 of the Bardot Lane-McGomery Lane Drainage Rehabilitation Project. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Counsel, any questions? Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Don't cast your vote.
Honorable mayor, Council President, my name is Douglas Ford. Live at 2427 Melrose Circle in Green Acres. And my concern on this ordinance is we have a serious drainage problem at Almasonic Lodge right off of Montgomery Lane. I'm just wondering if it's been that way since we purchased the building in 1994. And every time we entered the building or leave it in a heavy downpour, we have to wait water almost ankle-deep to get in and out of the building because the drainage has stopped up. Is Lois Lane included in that project? If not, could it be amended to be added?
Ben, do you have any answers there? Gentlemen?
Where did you say your address was?
I'm sorry?
Where was the address?
1825 Lois Lane. Right off, is a half a block off of Montgomery, one block off of Benton Road. Right behind Thrifty Liquor.
I will, I'll have to check. I mean, my suspicion is that that particular piece of property drains into this same system. And if you know anything about that particular drainage ditch, it's all failed. It's a concrete ditch that's cracked and collapsing and caving in. And our concern from the city engineering perspective is if that happens, if it's bad now, it's going to get way worse.
Well, can anything be done about it?
What I'd like to do is meet with you on site at your property and look at that in more detail if you'd be okay with that.
That'll work.
Okay, perfect.
You got his address and his phone number or anything?
Hey, do you mind staying until after the meeting?
No, not at all.
Okay. All right, thank you, Ben. Any other questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to contract with Nixon Engineering Solutions to provide a drainage study, Phase 1A construction documents, and right-of-way documents for the Tinsley Ditch Basin Relief Plan. Final reading.
I move.
Second.
Any questions, counsel? Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to approve the final change order for the CenturyLink Arena-Brookshire Grocery Arena Lighting Improvements Project with the increase of $32,995 to the contract amount. Final reading.
So move.
Second. Any questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to amend ordinance number 49 of 2021 for the Bossier Fire Department burn building project with an increase of 86 days to the contract. Final reading.
So move. Second.
Any questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance amending ordinance number 55 of 2020 to include plant inspection of the precast, pre-stressed piles and street fabrication of bridge garters in the amount of $400,000 for the Walter O. Bigby Carriage Way Project. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Counsel, any questions? Questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance authorizing the attached amendment with Manchak Consulting Group, Inc., to provide for services of the interim city engineer for the city of Bossier City. Final reading.
So move.
Bless you.
Second.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to authorize Mayor Thomas Chandler to execute an amendment for the attached access agreement with Greenfield Environmental Multi-State Trust, LLC. Final reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
New business.
Adopt an ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City, which affected property, public health, and safety due to the requirement to repair and reinforce brush rotors at the Red River Wastewater Treatment Facility at a cost of $67,800 to come from the sewer capital and contingency fund, and authorizes the city to enter into a contract with Access Construction for completion of the work. First and final reading.
So move.
Second. Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City, which affected property, public health, and safety due to the requirement to repair drainage line located at 2101 Norman Avenue at a cost of $40,000 to come from the 2021 Sales Tax Capital Improvement Fund, and authorizes the city to enter into a contract with High-Tech Concrete Repair LLC for the completion of the work. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Ben, did they say how long that would take right there? Give you any kind of idea?
I don't believe it stipulated a timeframe, Councilmember Williams, but we don't anticipate this. The work effort probably will take under a week.
Oh, really?
So once they're there, they'll go to work. We're doing all of that repair internally. There's some surface restoration that we've got to do as well as part of that. That may take a little longer, but the physical repair to the pipe should go very quick.
Okay.
Once I get that scheduled, I'll let you, I'll let you know what their plan is.
Okay.
Again, this is, this is where Norman kind of intersects with State Groves.
That's a different issue. This is a drain pipe along Norman that goes between two homes and discharges into the drainage system back behind and parallel to Norman. And it's got joint failure, and it's within feet of a couple of houses out there. So we've got a proposal to repair that internally and then restore the ground above it.
We need to fix that up, too.
Yes, sir, we do. We're working on that one as well.
Ben, is this the house that me and you were working on?
Yes, it is. In fact, Chris, same place.
All right.
Thank you.
Any questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City, which affected property, public health, and safety due to the requirement to install a new sewer bypass system at the intersection of Shady Grove Boulevard and Norman Street at a cost of $29,166.20 to come from the sewer capital and contingency fund. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance to declare that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City, which affected property, public health, and safety due to the requirement to make sewer and drainage repairs on Dot, Birdwell, and O'Keefe Streets at a cost of $350,000 to come from the sewer capital and contingency fund, and authorizes the city to enter into a contract with Lawler Construction for completion of the work. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC, City Council District 5, petitioner Jamie Muniz, location 2142 Airline Drive, Suite 100, Bossier City, Louisiana, requests conditional use approval for high- and low-content alcohol for on-premise consumption at a restaurant.
Any questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience?
Who made the motion in the second? Because I didn't hear.
Oh, I'm sorry. Make a motion.
Second.
Any questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Mr. Free?
Go.
Motion carries. Adopt a zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC, City Council District 5, petitioner L. Patio East Bank, LLC, location 707 Barksdale Boulevard, Bossier City, Louisiana, conditional, requests conditional use approval for high- and low-content alcohol for on-premise consumption at a restaurant.
So move.
Second.
Any questions, President?
I ask, why is it conditional? In that East Bank?
I want to ask you, with the Bossier MPC, there are conditions that it has, that it has to be over 300 feet from a school, church, library, public parks, and things of that nature.
Okay.
So we just have to double-check to make sure it meets that requirement.
Okay. Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the promotion of 1 Auto Mechanic 2 to Auto Mechanic 3 and replacing 1 Auto Mechanic 2 in the garage. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution to fill a vacant operator 1 position in street sweeping and grass cutting and backfill any position created by promotion or transfer. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution reappointing Henry Clay Bohannon II for confirmation by the Bossier City Council as Director of Parks and Recreation. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote. Clay, we're glad you're staying on.
Motion carries. And then... Adopt a resolution indicating the intention of the city of Bossier City, state of Louisiana, proceed with issuance of not to exceed $125 million Louisiana Local Governmental, Government Environmental Facilities and Community Development Authority taxable revenue refunding bonds City of Bossier City, Louisiana project, and otherwise providing with respect thereto as provided by Chapter 10D of Title 33 of the Louisiana Revised Statute of 1950 as amended, authorizing the appointment of professionals, authorizing an application to the State Bond Commission, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution giving preliminary approval to the issuance of not to exceed $15 million aggregate principal amount of taxable public improvement sales tax refunding bonds and not to exceed $75 million aggregate principal amount of public improvement sales tax revenue bonds of the city of Bossier City, state of Louisiana, making application to the State Bond Commission for approval of said bonds, employing professionals in connection therewith, and providing for other matters in connection therewith. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Counsel, any questions? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt a resolution authorizing the appointment of Wade... I'm sorry, that one's got scratched. Let me delete that one. Last item will be, or no, adopt a resolution authorizing the hiring and promotion of the Labor 1 and backfilling any position this may create for Parks and Recreation. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Any questions, counsel? Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopt an ordinance, amending ordinance number 70 of 2021, which declared that an emergency did exist in the city of Bossier City, which affected property, public health, and safety due to settlement along Airline Drive, Airline Drive near Murphy Street, allocating an additional $700,000 to come from the sewer capital and contingency funds, and authorizes the city to enter into a contract with Wickard Construction for completion of the work and providing for other matters in connection therewith. First and final reading.
So move.
Second.
Ben, do you want to talk a little bit about that? Tell us what's going on. Is this what the DOTD came up with, too, or?
So, Mayor, counsel, we've been working pretty around the clock out there to come up with what we believe to be the best solution so that we're not back in that hole again. Talked to many of y'all over the last months and years, and that particular stretch of road has always historically had settlement issues. We had a geotech firm come in, take soil samples for one at the particular location that's failed, that's uncovered right now, that we've got the traffic bypass on, and three more further to the west towards the river. And all of those borings indicated that at approximately 20 feet plus or minus, there's a very, very weak layer of soil, four to six inches thick, that's creating subsidence in the ground, which is moving the sewer main and the street and drainage and everything above it. So we worked with Wickard Construction, a very qualified utility contractor that's performed work in that area before. But the geotech had some specific requirements for restoration of the sewer main along with restoration of the subgrade once our sewer line is complete. We looked at just the expense of doing a point repair there, which was about a third the cost, a little more than a third the cost of what the expense is to replace. We're proposing to go from where the point repair is. We have a brand-new main east of there to the manhole, tying to that main and going all the way to Murphy Street and replacing that whole line. Got video evidence that suggests we're getting settlement all the way through there. And for, you know, 60% more, we get five times more the amount of sewer main. You know, it's not cheap. It's pretty sobering. But we feel like that expense over probably the very short term could save the city over a million bucks just by doing it all now. So I met with the mayor Friday. We went through the plan. The mayor's written a letter to DOTD expressing our concern, you know, putting them on notice of what we've discovered there and requesting their commensurate contribution in restoration of pavement. And they're recommending a soil, what we call like a chemical grouting system that will go in and inject all of that soil in there with a structural strength grout to keep that from happening in the future, and asking that they would participate in that as well. We were pretty optimistic we'd get a meeting with them, but in light of Hurricane Ida, that may get pushed a little while. So we do have those wheels in motion. You know, I just didn't feel like it was in the public's best interest to wait on DOTD to get some things moving out there. So that's what it's for. That's why we put the measure together. I'm optimistic it won't cost that much if we can get DOTD participation in that. But we'd like to put the contract with the contractor, we'd like to put them under contract tomorrow and get materials ordered and get started in putting that together. As we progress, we'll let you know, you know, what the time constraints are and things like that. But I've already told them pending the decision today, we want them to get started immediately out there, so.
That's been a problem for a long time.
Yeah, and it's disrupting a lot of people's businesses and everything else down there, so, anyway.
Do you remember the number before?
The cost to do the repair before was about $286,000.
So now, yeah, so we got another $700,000.
And a good bit of that repair is still there. That, we're actually connecting to where that repair ended and continuing forward. So it's just, that was a, that was a gut punch, for sure, when all that happened again. But we believe, you know, it's the weak nature of the soil certainly are causing that. When I say weak, you know, they, they take a boring rig and they start drilling down and they pound on the machine, and that gives you some indicator as to what the structural integrity of the soil is. When it got at about 20 feet, there were no blows. That thing just slid on its own all the way down. So you might think, okay, well, maybe we've got a void or something there that was caused by the sewer. The sewer was brand-new. Okay, brand-new PVC pipe. It's not corroded. You know, there shouldn't be any voids, any of that. All that was compacted. But that same condition exists west, almost to Barksdale. That's why we contend that it's not sewer-related and it's not isolated to that area. It's contiguous. That same stratum of soil exists all the way down through there. So it is an issue. Fortunately for the city, once we get to Monroe, the sewer main gets outside of the DOTD right-of-way. So it's still not going to be cheap if we have to fix it, but at least we're not in DOTD right-of-way if we have to get in there and do work. And we have before, Councilman Darby, we were there five, six years ago replacing the sewer main from Big Airline Pump Station right there across from Ellerby. That pump station, there's a new gravity main that goes from there close to Airline and Murphy, right in that location. So I'm told, I've been told in the past that, you know, contract, we didn't have any issues building the new lift station there, but in the past that they had issues building that because of ground conditions. So I could, it's a soap opera. I could talk all afternoon. And if you guys want to talk more, you've got more questions, let me know.
Thank you, Ben. Counsel, do you have any questions for... Any questions from the audience? Counsel, please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Counsel, any comments today?
I would just like to everybody to remember our Public Information Officer, Tracy Ponder. She is still in the hospital, and she still needs prayers. And I would appreciate everybody to keep her in her, there in her prayers because she, we need her back here and we need to get the doctors to find the cure and get her out.
Also, Mr. Maggio, I got a friend that...
Yes, I...
She's sick, and she's watching us today. So we told her, or Vince told her, that we would all waver her for the meeting. So guys, just wave and say hello, Christie.
Hello, Christie. We love you. Hey, Christie. Thank you, guys. She's a sweet young lady.
Meeting adjourned.